All right, we're gonna call the board meeting to order. Please stand for a pledge allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Burns here. Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Cooper? Oh, I'm...
Here.
Sorry. Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Satt?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
All right, I'll ask for a motion to approve the general proceedings for the board meeting held on June 11, 2024.
So move.
It was moved by trustee Johnson, seconded by trustee Carter. Any questions? Madam clerk.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll ask for a motion to approve the general proceedings for the first special board meeting held June 18, 2024.
So move.
Moved by trustee Carter, seconded... I'm sorry. Moved by trustee Johnson, seconded by trustee Carter. Any questions? Madam clerk.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Satt?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. I'll ask for a motion to approve the proceedings for the second special meeting held on June 18, 2024.
So move.
It was moved by trustee Johnson, seconded by trustee Carter. Any questions? Madam clerk.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Satt?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
I'm standing.
Attention goes with the affirmative. Motion carried. I'll ask for a motion to approve the proceedings for the committee of the whole meeting held on June 18, 2024.
So move.
Moved by trustee Johnson, seconded by trustee Carter. Any questions? Madam clerk.
Trustee Satt?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
I'm standing.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
I'm standing.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
I'm standing.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried. And finally, I'll ask for a motion to approve the proceedings for the committee of the whole meeting held on July 2, 2024.
So move.
Moved by trustee Johnson, seconded by trustee Carter. Any questions? Yes. Mr. Mayor, this says the meeting was canceled by... The cell at the top of it. It was canceled because of lack of power. Well, that was the second, yes. Okay. Yes, sir. That was... That means it was canceled. Okay? I'll present a motion on that. Therefore, we don't need a motion for that. We just cancel. Why even approve the general proceedings? All right. But if there was... But if there was no... Okay. And that's what I'm saying. That's what it is. They just cancel. So therefore, then, it should have to be voted on. Am I correct, how Mr. Ball? And it was... It was canceled, and I canceled it ahead of time. And then there was another one held on the 3rd.
This meeting was canceled?
Yes, it was. I canceled the 2nd... The July 2 meeting.
So on the... So what I did was, um... At the top of it, I just stated that we need to answer so that when it's time for me to do the journals, that go along with the agenda, it's necessary documentation that whenever there's an agenda, we have to have that done. So that's what the... I'll pose my question to the board now. Do you want to take the conservative approach without... As the minutes for the canceled meeting, but otherwise, the cancellation goes in and out itself?
That's a... That's another thing. Okay. All right. All right, the public comment. All questions and comments are directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter concerning the business of the village of Saw Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate. Counter replies, as a matter of fact. I will answer and respond to all questions once all questions have been concluded. Um... I don't think we have one.
We do not have one. I don't know. So we give a bye. To just protect. We vote in your favor. Speaking of which, just a real quick question for you, Mr. Mayor. But this is the mayor. But kind of a question. Um, I have a question. There is a fire hydrant down the street. I mean, it's painted really pretty, but that is one property that's not painted. So I just wonder, swap with that or not? Who's that?
Um, I am Frank Zane Anderson. And my comment would be about yesterday, that we were hard on yesterday. So calling up two call meetings for four trustees to just do whatever they want to do. And I am speaking for myself, but I'm hoping that other citizens will awaken and be awakened. Because all those called meetings are not giving them an effective amount of time to know when you're meeting, what time you're meeting. And instead of having it at the scheduled times like today, which is Tuesday at 7:05, that has been published since January of 2024. You publish it every year. You have numerous called meetings. And, Mr. Mayor, I do have questions today, and I would like for you to ask the four trustees who take their time to do these so-called meetings, the urgency and the importance of it. Because the one I attended yesterday, 12, that went from 6 o'clock to 9:30, was only important to you, and you say it was your fiduciary or... Let me think there. It was your way of looking at the money when you get the investigations done. You're concerned about two people that you tossed out the door with no longer a floor up here because they go on to a doctor's practice. And you see that as a concept of... Fine. So when you end that IT contract, I hope it will bring more citizens to this table and into this meeting room so the mayor gets their own observation of what you are continuing to do. And that is be disrespectful to everyone that pays taxes in this particular town called the village of Saw Village. Because I think the four of you all think that you're the only village. And finally, we have one from purportedly that came from trustee Burns, and she read it to a record on yesterday, from a citizen. I'm a citizen, and if I write your name, I'm gonna put my name on it because I want you to know by when I got something to say. And it's as bad an important meeting that I put it in front of you. So maybe that citizen was a relative of trustee Burns. Maybe it was a neighbor of trustee Burns. Maybe it was somebody picked her out of all of you all to go and talk to her about this office of his head.
There? All right. Um, the first, uh, comment. I will, uh... Confer this to our public works director in regards to the hydrant that was not painted. I wasn't... I couldn't tell you why it wasn't. I'm not gonna even speculate. He could have overlooked it or whatever, but, uh, I'll just ask him to give a... Go ahead, sir.
Oh, uh, fifty pages.
Okay. It was missed. It was missed. Okay. All right. Uh, before you go, ma'am, could you get him the address so we can know where he is? Okay, so he know where he's going. And, um, as far as the meetings and everything, uh, they are what they are. You've been here for any length of time. You've been and you've seen how the meetings have progressed, deteriorated, or whatever you wanna call. So I can't tell you what another person is thinking and what other persons are thinking. The only thing I can do is let you see for yourself. So with just... With that being said, I'm just gonna move forward because, um, I'm not about to try to speculate what another person is thinking or saying. All right. Um, down to the reports of officers. We do have... I have bid openings for the 219th place road. It says in here 219th, but it's 219th place. Road resurfacing project. I'm going to open these bids. And once I get through opening them, I'm gonna hand it to our illustrious, um, engineering firm. Does everyone have a sheet? I'm talking about the trustees. Okay. So the first one that I'm opening is Davis Concrete Construction Company. Okay. Okay, the amount of the bid? Davis Construct... Davis Concrete Construction Company. The amount of the bid is $452,699.95. They have a bond, bid bond. And this one was dropped off at the village of Saw. No, it was just one company.
Excuse me, Mayor. Do we have any, uh... Who... Who chooses these companies for bidding?
We sent... Well, engineering firm sends it out.
Oh, so engineering firm?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, it's just polished.
Right.
It's polished in the south hand and over the season. I got funds. It was also a scholarship to I got... So the contract... Any contractor that has been... I got the qualification. So they can do the bid proposal. And then they... And they... I got the qualification. And they are allowed to develop the bids and then... Or the bid package. And then the view of that. And then choose if they want to...
Okay, so all comes through Robinson. Public bidding. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is Eric Roy Amin Corporation. Okay, the bid proposal is for $395,870... I'm sorry, $892.70. And they do have a bid bond. The next one is from Gallagher Asphalt. Okay, the amount of the bid? That's $439,362.0. And they do have a bid bond. Okay, and the last one is from... It's from Deconstruction. Okay, their bid is $393,505.70. That's $393,505.70. They do have a bid bond. And those hundred months we have, return them over to... I'm gonna come get them now. Okay. I'm gonna wait till after the meeting. Thank you. Okay, I have a few items to go over. The first one is I was at a symposium yesterday, most of the day. And, um, I'm surprised I didn't get a lot of people to come up and ask about it. But this is in regards to your property taxes. I'm passing this out to the board, but I will have copies that'll be in the village. And for those tonight, I only have certain amount, but, um, hopefully we have enough. So I'll see people to take them. Wait a minute. Okay, um... Quickly, basically, a lot of people, which I'm sure homeowners, some people's taxes went up, some people's didn't. And the explanation that we got yesterday... Huh. I'm just going to go over all the things that we found out. Um, first of all, a lot of it's due to the funding of schools. This is what our county assessor told us yesterday. And the commercial billings, the commercial bills, uh, basically have fallen. Uh, we asked about... We asked about that, why they couldn't, uh, increase those. Basically, people, the economy is gonna get X amount. How they get it, if it's a billion dollars, they're looking to get a billion dollars. If commerce has left your town, they still want that billion dollars together or how... How much your town has been, um, contributed. So if you... If the commercial is gone, then it's... They're gonna distribute it between the residents in homes. Another idea... Another thing that happened, and this came from, uh, Mr. Rogers, Larry Rogers, who was the board review chairman. When your house was accessed, it was done on a smaller basis. In other words, your assessed value of your home was not the true assessed value. For some reason or another, it was... It was lowered. I'm sure a lot of people now are finding out, even here in Saw Village, that your house is worth more than what it was. And you're wondering how come that house that's down the street used to be $50,000, $60,000, and now it's worth $135,000. That's because it was under price, under, um, assessed. And we've asked that question too. Um, as I stated before, they're gonna get that bill or whatever it is they have to get from this... From this area. It was done... I guess the way it was explained to us, they're trying to catch up. But my question, and I did ask that question, why do we have to catch up? Why can't we stay where we were? And, um, you know, go from there? Because they're not doing this in the northern suburbs. It's only in the southern suburbs. And we had a room of about 80 people there yesterday. And that's your elected officials, um, your, uh, state legislators, county legislators. And, uh, they were all there asking the same question to the assessor and to the board of review. Basically, they didn't have an answer. Other than we're catching up, and it was under assessed years ago. I didn't like that answer either, but that's the only one they gave us. But they did say the... Because we also asked, can there be a moratorium? In other words, can they... Until they get this right, can we at least have a delay on the amount that went... That went up, that the taxes went up? In other words, if your taxes went up $1,000, can we have a moratorium to... To, um, at least delay that for a few months? Give people a chance to... To, uh, pay that. The county review board said no because your house was assessed... I'm sorry, your taxes are assessed from last year. So this is last year's taxes, that last year's amount that you're paying. So, uh, you know, the only thing I can tell you is this... There's what... Which I didn't know, there's what they call a guar... A guarantee, um, error. Certificate of error. However, you have to prove that there was an error made in your, um... In... On your tax bill. Now, I would suggest if anyone's went up to look at a couple of things. Homeowners exemption, seniors exemption, and... And the same thing about parents. Just in disability. The same thing about parents. So if you don't have that on there, that would give you a... An error. And then you can... And they would send you out another one, which would delay your taxes about a month. But that's it. Basically, they want... They want... They want the money. Um, we also asked, and this was something that was brought up years ago, a cap. A cap on how high they can raise your taxes or how high your taxes will go. And basically, they told us that became this legislation, which is now state. And it went down there and it didn't... It didn't go through. So there is no cap. So one thing I can tell you is if you have that problem, there is an office at Bloom. Um, Bloom is on Custer Street. There's an office there for the county assessors. And, um, you can take whatever... Whatever, um... Paperwork you have. And if your taxes did go up, I would go there and file. You might get a certificate of error. You might get one that... But it's only gonna give you a month to... To do that. So... And everyone thinks it's just homeowners. Let me tell you something. If you have, um, people that are investors, they're gonna pay their tax where you think they're gonna push it down to. You're gonna know... Your rent's gonna blow up with a... And a, um... Time and that. So the only thing I can... The only thing I would suggest is if you look at your bills, see if you do have all the exemptions. And if it's zero on some of them taken, it doesn't hurt to take it down to the Bloom office. But when they see the assessor's office and tell them exactly, you know, what it is. But there is... There is something that I did not know. You can pay your taxes each month. You don't have to pay it all at one time. You can get on a monthly plan. I didn't know that. I didn't know that you could go... That you can pay... I thought it was just two times per year that you can pay. So you can't pay them each month. So I would suggest that you do that because there are investors waiting for you to be the link on your taxes. Because when they get... And they pay your taxes for you, they can raise that rate because they own that land. That doesn't do it to state. It's just that someone buys your land for taxes. And they can raise the rate. And, you know, there's certain limits they can raise where they can still raise it. Okay, that being said, uh...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. Um, are you aware of Mayor Christopher Clark, the mayor of Harvey? Who's, um... And I saw this, that they are asking all the mayors in the south suburbs not to increase property taxes? Have you... Are you aware of this... Of this call? Because it was a call made to all the suburban mayors.
Okay.
Anything about that?
I... I don't... I'm not... I don't know where you got that from because...
I'm... I'm reading.
I don't know where it came from. However, Chris Clark was there yesterday. He went on, I think it was PBS Channel 11. And they had some things that... That he spoke about. However, as far as taxes are raised, we levy. When you levy, that's... That's what happens. But we can only levy, I think, 0.2%. Just that much. Anything higher than that, we have to show. We have to have a reason for it, and we have to file it with the state. So if we raise it for anything other than what's already in place, and there's levies for your pension, that's already been in place. I was before, I was even born, but there's levies for that. There's a lot of different levies. And if there is something that... And if there is something that, that goes beyond that, we have to bring it to the people. It has to be on the revolution, it has to be on the ballot to increase anything above seven percent. And I think it's point two percent. So anything else, um, as far as that's concerned, I mean, if he feels that he doesn't have any reason to levy anything, that's up to him. A lot of times, if we do, it's only because it's something that we have to pay for. There's nothing, we don't, we don't levy, at least I haven't seen anything, that we levy just because. The school's levy each and every year, and, look, Madam Clerk said, but it's the truth, just because. Your taxes that you did, that you paid now for, I'm, I'm, that going to the village is around eighteen and nineteen percent. School taxes are sixty-six percent. So that's where most of your taxes come from. And that's just one school, that's all the schools in that area. And then you have a Skid Row basement, then you have the library. So those are some of the things that your taxes, that, that you pay your taxes and, uh, that, that you, uh, that, that are levy and, and on your tax bill. You can see, if you look at your taxes, you can see all the different things, you can see percentages. So if it's, even if we did go, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't hit nowhere near what the, uh, school district is, is getting.
So is he, is he basically saying that we have a, we can opt, opt not to levy the taxes that's going to the schools, the library for this year? Can we choose as a village or as villages to not pay-
No, you can't do anything, that's theirs. We can't, we can't say we're not paying, I'm, I'm sorry. We can't tell or say that they have another taxing body that we, that, that we shouldn't levy, they, they shouldn't levy. We can't do anything about that.
I mean, for, for individual villages, you know, like individual districts is what I'm saying.
No, you can't, you can't, you, as a village, you can't touch the, um, anything to do with school districts. Now, what we, what, what happens in, in the villages, that they're levying for the levy for some, they're levying probably for things that, uh, that were paying off. We're not levying anything. Like I stated before, levy for the, um, police and fire pensions and, and, and those type of aspects. But as far as you're saying that we, we don't, um, we don't need to levy, you, you need to pay that.
No, I didn't say we didn't need to, I'm saying, is this what he's, what-
Oh, I, I mean-
Mayor Clark is saying, when he say don't, he's saying do not raise taxes, is that what he's suggesting?
That's, he's suggesting that no one should levy anything other than what's in there. Because there's always something new, there's always a reason. All right, um, let's see, I did have one more thing. Oh. And the last item I have is, um, from, um, Restorative Justice. There will be a rib, ribbing cutting for Restorative Justice Monday, July fifteenth at eleven o'clock at the community center. Um, the, um, department heads and the trustees are all invited. Pardon me, I'm sorry. All elected officials in, in, in the, um, department heads invited. Um, okay, um, picture date for the Salt Village Chiefs, um, is July nineteenth at six P M. At the community center. Picture date from, sorry, for the Salt Village Chief Baseball Team. Salt Village Chief Baseball Team is July nineteenth, six P M. at the community center. The baseball banquet is July twenty-seventh, uh, from two to six P M. in the gym. And last but not least, um, because I'm not gonna take away the Chiefs, though. It's a corner dog roast, back to school giveaway is Saturday, August twenty-fourth, from eleven to five. Some of those things I'll probably repeat again if they're at the next meeting, but just wanted to let everybody know. Give that to us. Okay. Eleven A M., Monday. All right, um, that proves what I have, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, I'm gonna try to talk as fast as I can because I have quite a bit to talk about as well. You know, uh, with these taxes, everyone is hosting some type of event or whatever. I attended a webinar today that lasted two hours. It was called navigating property taxes. This one, I think, was, um, more primed for homeowners, more so than legislators and all of that. They're very informative. They will be sending a recording and the handouts tomorrow, so I will make certain that you get it. However, this one was produced by the assessor's office as well as the South Suburban Housing Center. And its focus was helping you to look at your tax bill and just to see exactly all of the entities that you're paying into and compare it with how much you paid last year opposed to this, and it gave you a plus or a minus. So as you look at the taxing bodies, you know exactly how much of your funds are going toward that particular entity, okay? And it is like the mayor says, municipalities have nothing to do with it. We have one little line item, and one line item out of maybe seventeen taxing bodies. They even have a new one on there this time called, um, consolidated elections. Even though it's less than ten dollars, it's never been on there before. So I need to find out where those funds are going and if our office will be getting some. However, the South Suburban Housing Center, I think, is an area that a lot of us don't know about. And they are willing to assist residents with communicating with their mortgage companies. They're willing to assist people with how to focus on your escrow so that you do not lose your homes. And they're willing to do the work, the only thing is they have absolutely no money to give you. But they have the knowledge, the resources, and the expertise, and they're willing to lend that to you. If anyone need to contact the South Suburban Housing Center, you can call them at seven zero eight nine five seven four six seven four. Again, seven zero eight nine five seven four six seven four. And that is the South Suburban Housing Center. Um, I want to do a safe date with everyone, and I'm really happy that we are not conflicting anyplace. On August the seventeenth, there will be a candidate's informational forum. This is for any new resident who desires to seek office as the mayor, village clerk, trustees, school board members, and library trustees. And I just noticed, I didn't put the clerk on there. That was not by design. But we will be looking, some of our invited guests will be Mayor Burgess, the Cook County Clerk's office, Monica Gordon with Bloom Township, a representative from Community Consolidated School District One Sixty-Eight, a representative from McConaughey Library, and Vivian Copleton with the League of Women Voters for the Park Forest area. I think it's going to be very, very informative for those of you, and I'm hoping I'm talking to many of you who are sitting on this side of the dates, that will be interested in seeking office and to assist us as we work to move our village forward. The event is gonna be at the McConaughey Library. And the reason it's at the McConaughey Library is because it's in the daytime. And those of you who are here during the daytime, and like even now, you know that when you're attempting to operate media, it's very light, it's very bright, and you cannot see your presentation. So the community center was not available, so therefore I communicated with one of our partners, which is the library, and they have a road without windows. So you will be able to see all of the presentations. You are going to have to register, but right now I just have a draft, and I'm so happy it didn't go anyplace. Because it's, I know, I see a couple of errors on it, but I'll get it to you as soon as possible with the hopes that you will immediately register to attend because you'll be so interested in running. Um, special meetings. There's a lot of special meetings taking place lately. But people, when we have special meetings, we have to take care to leave the rotunda in a suitable manner. If you notice, no one have microphones. Have you noticed? So, and we told you, we have no microphones, so therefore you have to talk loud. We have ma- microphones, but we don't have batteries that have been charged to go into the microphone. We have to take care of this rotunda and make certain that it is left in the way that it's found. Uh, but all of these dead batteries, I don't want to ever see that again, whether I'm here or not. And most times, if it's a special meeting for which the village clerk has not been given the proper notice and have not, that does not follow protocol, I won't be at those meetings. My office is going to be respected, and if it's not respected, I'm not going to be a part of any shenanigans, okay? I wanna talk again, and this is going to be my last time speaking about the I M L conference. I provided notification a while back that, um, this year, because of so many complications and, whoo, I am not booking rooms for anyone this year, but know that the I M L conference registration has been open now for at least three weeks. And I shared with you then that you need to let me know if you intend to go because I have to register you for the conference. You're just responsible for your own, um, booking and, uh, hotel booking, okay? But rooms go fast. And usually by now, we have booked the hotel, we have booked with I M L, we've not done that. But I'm not going to keep going back and forth, uh, pressing you to let me know if you intend to go, okay? And I'm not giving a deadline. I'm sorry. Excuse me? Uh, I'm almost finished. A couple of meetings ago, I asked for some items to be on the committee of the whole meeting, and they did not get there. I am asking again for two items specifically to go on the committee of the whole meeting. And that is one for codification. We need to get our ordinances codified. What that means is they look at the new ordinances that we passed, look at the old ones that's relative to that. They have their attorneys go through the process and then codify. So that then, when we're looking for a particular ordinance, you know exactly what year the originals were made, when they had the, um, amendments, and most lately, the most recent one. So that's how we keep up with what's the most significant and most recent ordinance. We have to find a company, because you opted not to use that company we were going with before. You asked me to do the research, I did the research, and now it's time for us to get down to business. Another item that I asked to be on that agenda was looking at electronic meeting materials. Now, we've heard trustees talk about this quite a bit, but know that it is really, I, I think it's essential. I'm certain we have a school board member here who, they use this program, the process, and I'm certain that he can attest to his worthiness and not to be antiquated as some of the trustees have said before. Last thing that I'm going to say to take up, so that I don't take up any more time. You know, we don't have a website that we can post minutes to right at the present time. However, there is a company, New Publishing, a local publishing notices that many villages use when they need to post for R F Ps and other notices as well as minutes. I tried them out this past weekend, and it seems as if it will work. So I would just like the trustees and our residents to know that pretty soon I will be sending a link out where you can go to that site and look at minutes. I don't know if it takes minutes, I know it takes agendas, but I'll let you know, I'm still learning. So I, I just wanna learn just a little bit more before I open it up to you guys, so that you all will tell me, I don't know what I'm doing. Okay? Mr. Mayor, thank you, please, my boy.
Excuse me, uh, Mayor, I have a question. Uh, Madam Clerk, you said, we, we no longer have a website where we can post ourselves like we used to?
We've never been able to post agendas and minutes on the website, never. That was one-
I, 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 when I go, when I went on our website, I was able to find, uh-
Finding and posting are two different things.
So what were, what were we doing when we were, when we were posting, um, agendas and, um-
In the past, in the past, we would send it to I T.
Yes.
And I T would post it to the website.
So, so I'm asking, we are no longer able to do that?
Not at the current time, no.
And how long has that been going on?
Well, to be perfectly honest, I sent the last set of minutes in February, end of January, beginning of February, but the last set of minutes to get posted was from December the fifth, even though that company had received them at least two times. The last agenda that was on there, I believe that may be March of this year.
So no, no, no ability through the I T to post anything on our website?
No, and that was one of the provisions for the new website that I continued to ask for, uh, even when we had the other I T company. And that was, I wanted the capability, I wanted the village clerk's office to have the capability of posting those items because there were many O M A infractions lodged against the clerk's office who had no control over when and how our items got posted, even though they were delivered appropriately.
And the other question is, um, have you had the opportunity to talk with the I T company that has been, um, over our I T department since April of twenty twenty four?
We no longer go with the I T company providing, uh, for our website. If you can remember back in November, October or November, we signed a contract with a company called Activity, and they are responsible for the website. In fact, uh, we had an update from them, oh, about two and a half, three months ago. And they stated that it was forthcoming, but that everyone had not been cooperative in giving them the items that they needed to upgrade our website. But now I T does not do our website.
So, um, so right now Activity, who's responsible for our website, um, are they at a standstill because of lack of information? Are they continuing, or is there a liaison between, uh, our- our village in getting them this information?
The liaison between Activity and our village is our village administrator. So he's been in communication. He gave a report, if I'm not mistaken, about two weeks, on the 25th or something along that line. He gave a report, an update on where we were with Activity. So I would suggest that any other questions toward the website be addressed to him because I've given you the limited knowledge that I have at the current time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Here, ma'am, I have to be a question regarding... Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. All right, our village administrator, Mr. Ken Johnson?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is my report for the board meeting that we're having right now. I want to take that to provide you with all the content.
There is no microphones, so you have to speak up.
The James Gearsy redevelopment agreement and associated processes are proceeding nicely. We are scheduled to build before the zoning board directors at their next regularly scheduled meeting. At this time, as I mentioned before, we will circle back to the board trustee to propose getting the requisite approval in place and ratified to proceed with this most important project for this village. Based on my understanding, given a short time in place, this is one of the most important that's cited in projects in recent village history. The mayor and I completed a promotional video, a marketing video on behalf of the village with the active transportation alliance for the extension of the old plank road trail. The focus of the video was to talk about the benefits of having the extension over the part of the soft village and what that would yield to the residents in terms of visibility, the aesthetics, including bike path, hiking trails, nature walk, parkways. And the lower and simple four questions that we were asked. And please introduce yourself. How long have you lived in the community? Not for me. How long you been involved with the project? And what benefits do you see the project bringing to the village? I'm happy to report that the mayor did an excellent job, even though he could go to makeup that day. Once I receive the link to the final video, I will distribute it to all concerned. Next, the mayor and I recently attended a South Suburban Managers and Managers Association gala. Told that the sprawling private idle wild golfing country club had had a chance to coordinate further with the leadership and relationship managers signed to Soft Village for the Cook County Build Up Cook Bureau of Asset Management. Subsequent to the session, we've been working closely and coordinating on a $3 million pipe, lead pipe abatement project where that entire amount is earmarked for Soft Village. This project is proposed to begin in South Suburban Township, various townships, and Soft Village. Will be a top priority. In fact, we are first on that list for that $3 million lead abatement project. I'll circle back with all concern at the kickoff for this most important initiative for Soft Village. We have a longstanding chronic situation based on our understanding with the driveway even that provides entrance and egress access for the fire department, for the fire trucks and obviously other heavy equipment, of course. There exists significant subsurface subsidence, that's a sinking and settling of the under, under, underneath wave of conditions throughout the, throughout the entire area that if not repaired soon will result in a single sizable proportion that will certainly affect efficiency in the operations for the fire department. We're taking emergency steps to put in place a solution as soon as practical, practical and deployed that solution. I'm happy to report that the village's initiative with AT&amp;T infrastructure project is proceeding nicely as well with the high-speed fiber lines and optics that have been deployed at the police, police department, administration building, and the community center. The fire department and public works next on the schedule to be expedited. As to the latter, the main yard is not considered in the original scope, but I've insisted that our current IT group add that and add the wells, stations, pumping stations, while it's called for. By complete solution to upgrade the seemingly decades-old Comcast modems, which will upgrade to high-speed modems in the interim to AT&amp;T being able to schedule what would be a special construction project for them to enable the wells. I wanted to provide a special thanks to Mary Cross and three pleasant young ladies that have been working with us intern for us at All Center. We're manually handling and dispatching all of the residents of the village with required communications and information regarding the IDPA source order protection plan and the villages that clients with that groups requirements who are getting that communicate out to the residents or to the base station definitely fine. They were tired asleep for two days last week to get that. That's my report.
Excuse me, ma'am, ma'am.
All right.
I want to ask the VA.
Okay, question.
Mr. Johnson, you said that there were the well pumping station? Did you say something about a pumping, well pumping station?
Yeah, they had three wells.
Right, and you said it was not included?
In the original scope for the AT&amp;T infrastructure project.
And so is that additional cost, obviously?
Sure.
And has that cost been submitted, or?
After we've just opened the request.
You told them to do it already?
They have to propose it to us.
Okay, so they're, and they are IT?
AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T?
That's separate from IT.
Right, AT&amp;T. There, there's some additional cost. And you're asking them to prepare a proposal to bring before the board? Before the work is started, correct?
Absolutely.
And do you know when they will be bringing this new cost proposal before the board?
I do not.
So you, so you just asked them yesterday to prepare the cost announces?
Yes, yes.
To include it?
Already do.
Of what they're already doing?
Correct.
So my question is, I just want to make sure that I'm following. There's work already done, being, being done. And the scope of these well pumping stations were not included in the previous amount. So there will be an additional cost. And you're saying that they will not perform this work before they bring that additional cost to the board that, that we know not of? And we also do not know how much this additional cost is. But it will be brought before the board, before the work continues. And, but you're saying that you don't know when, so?
I don't know. It depends on their schedule.
Okay.
Their planning.
Mm-hmm.
Their resource cover.
Mm-hmm.
Recovery, what we're trying to do.
Excellent. And so the last thing is, so right now, the well pumping station with additional cost is on hold until they go through all of this process you just mentioned. Their timing.
Movement to the current infrastructure is on hold based on what we just talked about. The wells, the infrastructure, the electronics. We have decades-old modems in there.
Mm-hmm, I understand.
We're going to upgrade those using Comcast as a bridge to the final upgrade.
Right, right. So it was very difficult to hear, so I'm just trying to make sure that I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying. So we have to also upgrade modems through Comcast?
As a bridge to the final...
As a bridge.
...point into AT&amp;T.
And these are the things that you did say that were additional and that were not a part of the original cost?
Absolutely. It makes sense to be, it will be additional. It's an addition, it's an additional scope.
Okay, and so through Comcast and also through AT&amp;T, before any of this work is done, we're going to make sure that both of those companies give us the cost of this project that was not included in the original scope.
For the third time.
It could be four, five, or six times. I just want to make sure, for the record, that I, because again, I did not hear you. So I'm trying to make sure that I, I heard what you were saying. And so I'm repeating what I, what I think I'm hearing, and I'm getting you to, you know, make sure that I'm hearing correctly. So for the fourth time, for myself, I'm going to repeat that the wells, pumping station with AT&amp;T, the upgrade of modems with Comcast, those were not included in the original scope. And that before this work is done or before this work is put into motion, the board will see the new numbers before any of this work is done. So I just want to make sure I was hearing you correctly.
As the nation, what typically happens when you have a contract?
Mm-hmm.
There's a change order provision overturned in the contract. So when there's ever a change order to the original scope, they go through the same process to make that additional. They assess, they diagnose, they provide you with stages, phases, steps, and tags, and the associated cost, how long it's going to take, when it will be completed, when it will go live.
And that's excellent. And those will be all the things that comes before the board before this project commence. Correct? Correct, Mr. Johnson, correct? Sir, I'm asking you, sir, sir, listen, sir, listen. It doesn't matter, I, listen, sir. I'm asking you a question because as I stated, I could not hear you. So I'm making sure that I'm hearing correctly. So all I, all you need to do is ask, is that correct, sir? Is that correct?
No.
Is that, did I hear, did I hear correctly? Did I hear correctly, sir? Because again, I am taking notes, so I want to make sure my notes are accurate.
Is that your, is that your question?
Yes, those were my questions, yes.
Thank you. Who? Oh, that's, trustee Seth.
Mr. Johnson, can we have a copy of the reports you just gave?
Absolutely.
Hey.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Williams.
Thank you. We don't have a treasurer's report or a finance report.
Okay.
Are you providing that? Or who's going to be providing those? Because the treasurer and the finance department, they're not at the meetings anymore.
The treasurer is not at the meeting, the finance? Yeah.
No, she's not here right now.
She's not here right now.
And we haven't had, we're not getting our bills.
She's not at the meeting. She's not here today. She's not here today.
She's not here today for a particular reason.
Yes, she had, it was a medical reason.
Regardless, Mr. Mayor, you interrupted me when I was speaking.
Okay.
My question to Mr. Johnson is, who will provide the financial reports in the absence of a treasurer who we haven't seen for many weeks and the finance director? Those reports are supposed to be given at every board meeting. If for whatever reason, they could not attend the meeting, can we still get the reports? That's all I'm asking.
Under the ordinary course of events, my finance director would first directly mean would provide me with her report if it was a planned absence. It was not a planned absence today, so I don't know the finances of her report. I have nothing to do with the treasurer, the MIA for months.
Exactly, this is what I'm saying. He's been at MIA for months, he's still getting paid?
No.
No, okay, well, I saw him at the account pay. That's why I was wondering. But sir, if and when you get the report, would you kindly make sure the trustees get it?
Absolutely.
That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. The second thing, as far as the website is concerned, I know that it's under reconstruction for several months, but we should be able to still get bills and agendas on the website company that we're paying for. Because these are ongoing things that happen.
Yes, I'll be taking care of it by next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
My problem is that we have Soft Village Online and Uptown Live probably we got that have provided input on all of the different apps, content, engage with all of the functional leaders. They provided all of their content. And it's just fit to finish at this point. I've seen it 95% done last week. I even sent in some stuff with my picture and narrative and message. And it's pretty good.
Thank you, sir.
Trustee, where did you see Mr. Williams getting paid on the account pay?
I was looking at one of the most recent accounts payables, and it looked as if he was on the payroll report.
He's not on this one.
Well, if he, if he's been gone for a couple of months, shouldn't the trustees have been notified? And we don't have treasurer? You know, people come and go at Soft Village, I mean, I understand that. But when somebody is in trouble with the treasurer, I mean, can we do that now?
So, excuse me. So, so at this, I, I know, Mr. Johnson, you stated that the treasurer had been MIA missing in action. So is he missing in action or is he no longer a treasurer here in Soft Village?
I have no idea, I've never met the man.
I mean, you're the VA. So since you say that he was missing in action, that was from your words. So I'm asking you as the VA, is he still a treasurer here in Soft Village? Or do you know why he's missing in action as our VA?
That's my knowledge of those persons.
Mayor Burgess, do you know if the treasurer still works here? Is he still a treasurer here? Mr. Lewis?
He hasn't been here for a while.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, so I'm just, that's my answer.
Is he still the treasurer?
My answer is he hasn't been here for a while.
Is he coming back?
My answer again, is he hasn't been here for a while.
The treasurer hasn't been here for a while. Is he coming back, sir?
You gonna make me answer something, or say something that I'm...
I don't understand, I'm asking a question. Is our treasurer coming back? Is he still a treasurer or not?
I said he hasn't been here for a while.
Well, who's toward the treasurer duty, sir?
We have the finance, the finance director is doing the president, he's doing the...
So, so...
Right now.
And that's...
But there's nothing... I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go any further. You seem like you all came to...
Mr. Mayor, I am asking a question about the treasurer of our village who deals with our finances. So, Mr. Mayor, I ask your question. You don't have to do anything, you don't want, you're not doing nothing, no how, sir. So it doesn't matter.
I'll ask a motion to recess.
Recess?
It's moved by trustee Johnson and seconded by trustee Carter. All in favor?
I know.
No.
Ten-minute recess.
Why can't we ask a question? The treasurer's... No, I'm not, I ask you, was the treasurer still a treasurer here, sir? And I asked the VA the same question, sir. You, we, we should be able to ask you if a treasurer still works in this village. Mr. Mayor, we ask you a simple question.
Yeah, cut off.
I get, you're right. Your mama, did you? I was, I said you did.
No, you said.
I said you were angry, I said that's angry. I say you, but you said yourself was angry.
Recess, ma'am, recess, go ahead.
I never said my mama. No, I did not, I have never said that, sir. No, I do not, you said. I mean, you called yourself angry.
Trustee, nobody's control.
I didn't call you, you called me.
Okay, fine.
Go home, back.
Yeah. Say you called, see?
I did not call you.
That's all I can do.
She's not trying to say, ma'am.
She ain't saying everything. That's why can't nothing get done here. Six packs, every weekend. Six packs, not my answer, six packs.
Hey, I'm, I'm. I know. What's that? What? Be nice, be nice. Did you have a case? Or did you?
Uh, I've, 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 uh, uh, especially.
Yeah, yeah, I missed it, I think you all worked out, put you out.
Stop there, I see you two guys, like, all in.
I guess if we don't sit here, we gonna be here all night?
There you go.
There you go. Yeah? Oh, I remember.
Okay, so I'm gonna give you some, sir.
Okay.
It's a good one. Not a bad one. I'm a loving that side, like, you have these people here.
Oh, good.
So. Thank you. So I have this room over there reserved for Thursday. But I was thinking of getting one for Wednesday. So if I go with you, I have a Wednesday. I'd have to come back with you, right? I'd tell you. I'd go pack my luggage. I'd always go pack it.
I got, I got one for you.
No, I would tell, no, I would do my luggage on the bus, and come, and take my luggage to help if we get tickets before. And then we'll just let you know. I'm not here. Now you're gonna go do that? This is coming next time. You know, you're working on it. I don't have.
Y'all gonna do that, man?
I'm gonna use some, I, I, I'm gonna say it. I'm gonna explain it. Sorry, I didn't know.
All right.
All right, all right.
Hey, Eminem, how you doing today?
You all right, man?
I'm good, bro, how you doing?
I'm all right, man.
Yeah.
I'm all right.
Crazy messes, oh, boy.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, thank you.
Hey, Mary.
How you doing?
I'm okay, how are you?
I miss, I miss you yesterday.
What?
Oh, okay, that's where I should have went.
I went, um.
All right, our last four motions to reconvene.
So.
Moved by trustee, uh, Johnson, seconded by trustee Carter. Madam President, please call it off.
First, yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Calling?
Here.
Here.
Trustee Stan? Trustee Lee? Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on. Um, corporate counsel, uh, Freddie, uh, Dan Logan.
Thank you, Madam Logan.
Okay. Little visionary, Ms. Melanie Allen, Robinson and Mary.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Board of Trustees. Just have one item for tonight, and that's just reference to the little women that just heard. Um, this project is the two hundred and nineteen place growing resource project, Orient's Marrow Avenue. Um, it's anticipated that this, I will take you with that tonight, or tomorrow, to, um, our end of strength staff, and we'll review in task for accuracy. Um, and once that's concluded, we will prepare a recommendation for work, which I will exempt from the life of the board meeting. Um, assuming that it's approved at evening, the anticipated construction will begin in, uh, late August, and if concluded around the end of October.
Okay. Police Department, Chief Malcolm White.
Please, Mr. Mayor, Madam Board of Trustees. Uh, call for service report.
Oh. All right. Thank you.
Uh, I call for service report for this evening is from, uh, June twenty-fifth till, till this morning. Uh, the police department responded to three hundred forty-two calls for service. Uh, during that same time, uh, we made, uh, over twelve arrests. They wanted to be, uh, so, um. I'm asking the citizens save the date, August sixth, it's the first Tuesday in August. Just like every year, uh, our National Night Out, it's prime. Uh, we're, we'll have our similar festival to what we've had every year. Every year seems to get larger and larger with more participants. The funds that we raised that night, uh, go towards shopping for cotton, we help, uh, some children of Salt Village and the school districts, uh, around Christmas times. Um. Last thing, uh, myself and other members of the South River Chiefs Association Executive Board will be meeting with, um, Democratic candidate for, uh, state's attorney, uh, Burke, uh, tomorrow. Um, discuss different issues, um, and I'll, uh, I'll, uh, relay what's the finance in there, so. Uh, other than that, uh, my report for the night is, uh, complete. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Um, Fire Department Chief Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Board of Trustees. For the period of June twenty-fifth to tonight, the fire department responded to a hundred calls for service. Uh. There's a lot of things going on that, that involve, uh, going into these fires we've been having. We just ask that you please, 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 be careful on, uh, doing your cars, if you're working on your car, we ask that you just do it away from your house. Um, we had a call on last week where they were working on a car, and they caught their car, all the cars in the driveway, as well as a house on fire. So we ask that you just pull away from your house, um, as you're working on your car, especially if you're a YouTube mechanic. Um. And I'm being, it's funny, but I'm being very serious.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, um, also, um, I want to congratulate, uh, my deputy chief, David Klinger, on his thirty years of being a paramedic. Uh, paramedic Nicole Ruber, as well as Yen Yassnabibian, on their five years of being a paramedic. Uh, again, this is something that's huge for us because, uh, it's such a shortage in this field, and I'm excited that we have these, uh, five paramedics serving our community. Uh, again, thank everybody that came out and supported our Women's Auxiliary Vendor Fair. Uh, it was very, uh, nice. You missed it, um, I had some very delicious bounty that I made myself. Um, yeah. Thank you, Madam Burke, she bought a couple of, um, and it was buttery, nice, straight from grandma's recipe. Uh, so, uh, if you missed it, if you missed it, I'm sure there'll be another one. Uh, in, in regards to, uh, the weather that we have the next couple of days, uh, I just wanna make sure that you guys, make sure that your sun pump is on, plugged in. Are we supposed to get a lot of rain? So we just wanna make sure that you're safe there, and, uh, that concludes my report. As always, stay safe and God bless. Thank you.
Okay, Public Works Director Dante James?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, trustees, I don't have a report tonight, it's been, I've been extremely busy. Uh, but I will get you guys a report, I think this is the first time I've ever had a report. Feels kinda weird, but, uh, can I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
So, I don't know what the situation is with the, uh, billing for Central Rodding. Last week, we lost over two and a half million gallons of water. If you look on the side of three ninety-four going north, that's all our water over there. Two and a half million. Central Rodding was the only company that could come out and save us because it was a very catastrophic break. It took us six days, twenty-four hours a day, just to locate the break. We had no idea where it was, 'cause we didn't get any reports from the residents, so we knew it wasn't residential. But it was huge. Uh, I don't understand why there's an issue with paying them, but at the end of the day, after calling several companies at one in the morning, Central Rodding showed up in Salt Village. We located it, and we repaired it. These people deserve to be paid. So let me tell you how it works if things like this continue to get kicked down the road. This is for all you residents too, especially you North Side residents. All right, let me be clear with something. Central Rodding has been out here for two or three months, rodding out your sanitation lines, rodding out your storm lines, which have been neglected for years. We found engine blocks, tires, animals in this system. Okay? You can thank these guys and ladies for showing up for the last three months and rodding out this stuff, because the North Side wouldn't fail, seriously. So if you live on the North Side, you should be concerned. Not so much on the South Side, but the North Side is really in bad shape. So we use this company, for one, they're very professional, they show up. They're not robbing the village like some of these bigger companies that this village was used to using, such as your Calumet Plumbing, one of the most expensive municipality plumbing companies in Cook County and surrounding counties. And they do the same kind of work, but they show up when they call. And mind, two and a half million gallons. We created a lake over there last week. We tested the water, that's our water. Yeah, so I don't know what the problem is, but this is definitely not a political game to play. So if you live anywhere in this town, you need to be very concerned about how this plays out. All right? And I wanna go back to what Mr. Johnson was talking about, the AT&T deal with the wells. Again, this is not a time to play games. Those wells and the communication between those wells, I'm gonna be real clear with this, they don't talk to one another. The system is extremely old, wasn't maintained by previous directors, whomever they are. I'm gonna put it out there just like that. Um, so, if we don't get that communication up and running, we're open for hacks from former employees who may be bitter and can jump in and do whatever they want to to that water system. We gotta be serious about this, because, uh, we're in a not-so-good situation. We're making it, but, uh, not paying bills is gonna be real bad. So picture your homes with sanitation waste backing up in it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't really think about that, because if that happens in your home, you better have home insurance and a good cleaning person, because it's gonna get bad. And, uh, we're trying to prevent that. For the last three months, we've been working extremely hard with that, again, it never was done. So I understand that you may see some billing that you've never seen before. Well, you should have seen it in the past, if the directors in the past had paid attention to these things. So now everything that's came and come to roots now. Things are falling apart, we're doing our damn best to keep it together, but we're running out of time, period. Uh, that's my report, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Um, Mr. James, I'm looking at the accounts payable report, I don't see an invoice for a recent... Do you hear me, sir?
Oh.
Right here, I hear you, totally with.
Um, I don't see an invoice for a recent occasion that you're speaking about on the accounts payable. Matter of fact, if I look at the agent report, all I see for Central Rodding is, um, seventeen thousand dollars worth of invoices that are, um, sixty-one to ninety, and ninety-one to one hundred and twenty days old, and they're not add the accounts payable. So neither is the one, if you're referring to something that just happened recently, where is the invoice?
Well, I'll tell you what, this is how it works. We haven't got that bill yet, we have no idea, and we're gonna be looking at putting that burden on somebody else. Okay, so, whatever that bill is, we're gonna make sure somebody pays for that break in that main. So, no, we don't have any bill yet, but oh, trust me, it's gonna be an ugly one. And our goal is not to take the burden of that repair.
Okay, I thought you were trying to infer that we weren't paying it? I don't see, I don't see it, is what I'm saying.
Which one you don't, if you said you seen the ones you seen, that's, that's just stay on that now.
Okay, so.
Just, let's talk about that, because this big catastrophic situation we had last week, if you can't get past the, the seventeen thousand dollar one, surely you're gonna lose a lot of sleep with the one that they're gonna deliver us, and that's the one, we're gonna try to do our best to, uh, pass on to, uh, whoever did that.
Okay, but, and I agree with you, sir, that's why I'm trying to bring this to light.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at the, uh, accounts payable, the only payment I see for Central Rodding is three thousand dollars.
Did we pay it?
Seventeen, no, sir.
Okay, so that's my point.
The accounts payable tonight only has three thousand dollars on it. There's seventeen thousand dollars worth of invoices outstanding. If this company is dead integral to us, why aren't we paying the whole seventeen thousand?
Well, let's concentrate on the one that you wanna talk about, trustee. At the end of the day, I don't wanna get off into those kind of questions, okay? At the end of the day, I'm letting you know, and I do believe you live on the North Side as well, uh, it's not gonna be a good look, I don't wanna get into all that other stuff. All I'm asking is if we can just move forward and pay the bills that are outstanding, so we don't cause a lot of other issues to, uh, snow. that are outstanding, so we don't cause a lot of other issues to snowball. It's already snowballed, trust me. Those little bills there are, you know, technically they're not that big for what we're getting out of it, okay? Fifteen years of not maintaining sanitation and storm. A seventeen thousand dollar bill, we're lucky, we're extremely lucky.
I understand, Mr. James, but what I was trying to point out to you was there are bills in the accounts payable department that can be paid to them. Now you're saying this is small amounts, so it doesn't matter. Before you said there was this big improvement, this big thing, and we need to pay it. As soon as we get that invoice, yes, we should pay it. But there's invoices out here that are old that we could have been already paying, that's my point.
So see, I'm responsible for public works, all right? We get the work done, you guys pay the bills. I can't answer any of those questions. I'm just here to give you the information you guys really need so we don't get the big jam, you know? That's all, I can't answer to that.
Excuse me, I do have one question. Thank you so much, Mr. James, for having me.
Trustee, did you just want to blurt out? You didn't answer, you didn't?
I had my hand done, right with trustee, uh, Sam.
We can't, just the microphone's for you. You can ask me the knowledge.
You looked right at me.
Please, just don't start blurring out, but go ahead now.
Mayor.
In the meantime, please recognize the chair.
I did.
No, you didn't. That's not recognizing the chair.
Thank you, Mayor. So the question I have is, so that we will not run into these issues again, does the Public Storm Department have an invoicing system where when these people do the work, somehow someone key it into an invoice and it prints out? Do you guys work on that basis?
So, I'm sorry, trustee, I really don't know how bills get paid. I just try to get the work done. I try to stay in my lane when it comes to that.
Okay, so what we're gonna have to do is, because the people are coming out to do the work, but we really don't have no way of knowing what all that is. And the only way we can know is through invoice. And I don't, the invoice should be going to the Finance Department. So I guess that's a situation that we would have to work with the VA on to, when the work is done, somehow it's entered into the system and the invoice prints?
No, no, I mean, it's like any other type of bill. You know, it's just like anything else that needs to be paid. I mean, I'm not sitting here saying that we don't know how to do an invoice or pay a bill or something like that. That's not the case. The case is, when anybody does work in this room for anybody, they expect to be paid. That's all it is. And at the end of the day, we need some of these contractors because, I mean, listen, can you imagine if we didn't pay Robinson Engineering all the time? We'd be in real bad shape. I'm just using that as an example.
I agree, I agree.
So I just need you guys to respect the fact that if they did not show up for us, we would have been destroyed.
Totally, totally. And we want to make sure that these vendors are being paid, one hundred percent. So what we will do as Public Health and Safety Committee, I will try again to have, get an appointment with the VA so that when these bills come forth and these people need to be paid, we have record that they were here in the village, we have a record somehow that this is what they've charged us and that is somewhere where we can physically make sure they get paid. Other than that, we have to look at this AP.
I mean, whatever that means, but this is what I want to do.
So they'll get paid. They'll get paid. We just have to know that they are, they are doing whatever it is that they're doing. If we don't know that they're doing the work, how do we know to pay them? So we will work with the VA to make sure that these people, when these contractors and vendors come in, that invoices are immediately generated because I'm sure that you are communicating with the VA.
Of course.
So we'll make sure that these invoices are immediately generated and immediately given to the Finance Department and the trustees so that we can make sure that these people are paid expeditiously.
So to follow up with that, I want to add this too. So at the next meeting, I'm gonna set up a PowerPoint presentation just so all of you can understand what's going on in this town, okay? So we can either agree to move forward, you guys agree to move forward. I don't have nothing to do with that part. I just know what's wrong. I'll do a PowerPoint presentation. I will bring every person in here to do the presentation and see their part, you know, kind of just like Melanie does when she does her thing for Robinson, all right? So the whole community can know where we stand with our infrastructure when it comes to our water mains and water quality, all that good stuff. You know, so, you know, we got pictures, videos and all that stuff. And so I'll put that together so you guys can have a total scope of what needs to be done and what has to be done in a right-now kind of situation, you know?
And that would be excellent. So once we see that, then right then and there, when you bring that forth, then you can discuss with us on the spot. This is what has to be done. And you can even give us times and frames when it needs to be done, how it needs to be started. And we can get a jump on all of this because truly, we don't have no clue.
That's the thing, none of us have a clue until it goes bad, you know what I mean?
So for you to do it.
When it goes, it goes.
So that would be excellent to do a presentation to let us see this, all this damage that's going on in our village. So we, again, get a jump on it and start preparing in advance to set up dates for these repairs to be done. And if we can do that, you bring it before us, we can set in advance and start giving ourselves timelines and dates to start projects. And that would be a fantastic way for us to get a jump on all of this.
Well, I mean, I'll just let Mr. Johnson handle that part. You know, I'm outside, I'm not, I'm an outside guy. I'm out here doing work. So I'll let VA Johnson coordinate all that and everything. And we'll be outside fixing stuff.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, um...
Mr. Mayor, can I add?
No.
I was getting the lead when they took that seventeen thousand dollar issue.
No. Your timeframe, come on. The timeframe for that presentation, will it be next week or two weeks from now?
I'd like to do it at the next board meeting. I gotta put all this video stuff together.
Do you want to do, because usually it's done at the committee meeting.
Oh, okay.
So you want next week or two weeks?
No, no, next week, we got a lot going on. I'm gonna work on it, man, because you guys need to see what's going on, so.
No problem. Trustee Coleman, first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Director James, first of all, let me just say thank you for you sharing your concerns with us and giving us, you know, a bird's eye, your attempt to give us a bird's eye view of what's going on. I appreciate that. I'm sure all the board members appreciate that. Right now, I just want to share with you what we have on the accounts payable as of today. We have Central Rodding total sewer service, but in this case, we have the description. And I'm gonna ask you if this is what you're talking about. Is this the one that's a hydro jet from the sanitary manhole at the creek?
Yeah, if that's on there, yeah, I mean, that's all they've been doing. You know what I mean? That's what they're here to do, to keep your waterways clear of debris. And so when you use the bathroom, it doesn't come back and see you. It goes out where it's supposed to go. When it rains, like it's raining now, if you notice, the North Side doesn't even have any pooling water over there anymore. We pretty much got control over that a little bit.
Is that the question you were talking about or is that...
No, that, man, listen. Get in your car and drive over this way here. Just get in your car and go over that road and look to your right. And you can see your water over there.
Three ninety-four, right?
Yeah, look right over there.
All right, what I'm just, just to let you know is that Central Rodding service is on the accounts payable. And the bills that are here should be paid tonight.
Appreciate that, Brother Coleman.
Trustee, I'm sorry, trustee Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the end of the day, we all get a copy of the accounts payable. I wish, I wish that trustee Coleman would stop amending this accounts payable and we wouldn't be going through this. If you sit there and you listen, every time I agree to pay and move the motion to pay the full amount, he amends it. Can you please, trustee, stop? Because we need these bills to be paid and we don't need to lose any vendors.
Am I, uh...
We're not going back and forth.
We're not going back and forth.
We're not going back and forth. She made a comment, you made a comment, so if you all know the call later, that's it. But we're not going, the residents and companies here are arguing, which they did, made some of them.
The bills need to get paid.
But we're not going back and forth.
Okay, is that all that you have, huh?
Yes, sir.
Mr. James, okay. Reports of committees and commissioners. Senior Advisory Committee, Mr. Emmett Fox. Could you give him that mic up, that thing? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Board of Trustees, Madam Plurk, department heads, all the residents, let me just real quick. You all pretty much know the regular weekly bingo, senior bid.
Excuse me, somebody, excuse me, we have a lady here. Can you all, she can't hear it, I can't hear because you all talking.
Oh, no, you can't hear me?
You can't hear me?
Now we can, yes, go ahead, sir, but I couldn't hear you because they were talking up here.
All right. Our next casino trip is scheduled for July twenty-fourth. And the cost is forty dollars per person, includes the bus and it's fifteen dollar play voucher and a ten dollar food voucher you receive. The money is due by July fourteenth, so that's coming up soon. See Deborah Coney or Carol Coleman, so you can reserve if you haven't already. Then we moved our committee meeting to, and it's not this Thursday, but it's Thursday, July nineteenth, right after our breakfast bingo, it's on a Friday. Oh, I got Thursday, I'm sorry. It's a Friday, July nineteenth. And we'll be at one o'clock in the senior center. And that concludes our report.
Board of Fire Police Commissioners, Chairman Francine Anderson.
Our report, Mr. Mayor, includes we have completed a testing cycle for the police department and we did that this past Saturday at the senior center. And I want to thank the senior committee for allowing us to have our testing there. And we will be having testing for the fire department in June, July, and twenty-fourth. You know if anyone is interested, the information is on the blue line. You can send them there so that they can turn in their application and we will be having that testing at the fire station. And that should end my report.
Okay. No, no, please, can you just give me two? Okay, presentation aborted, resoluitions. I'll add for a motion to approve the resolution accepting the AIC technology recommendation and proposal to upgrade the villagers' network.
So moved.
Second. Approved by trustee Johnson, seconded by trustee Carter. Any questions? Madam Plurk.
Mr. Mayor, what I was wondering, we took a motion yesterday in regards to AIC. And part of the problem is, this is the first time we're hearing about all of these emergency situations and things that have been happening in the village for two years. And now we're hearing about it, but we gotta do it right now. And everything is an emergency. I got some questions. Number one, starting with, what budget are we even working with? We haven't had a budget for two years. Where is the money coming from for these upgrades? And not that it doesn't need to be done, we all know it needs to be done, but what are we going to forego in order to add things to a budget that we don't even really have right now? And I think we need to have a little bit more discussion about this because I'm totally confused on exactly how much it's gonna cost, where the money's gonna come from, and why hasn't this been done sooner? I've got a stack of emails from the previous IT directors that have said time and time again, back and forth from AT&amp;T, the mayor, Tim Williams, we need to move on this, I can't get anybody at the village to respond. Our looming deadlines are happening and nobody's responding. And this has been going on for months. And now all of a sudden, we get this, we gotta do it right now or the whole North Side is gonna flood. And yes, sir, I do live on the North Side. Do I want it to flood? No, but why is it in the position that it's in right now? And why hasn't the trustees found out about it before now? And why is it an emergency situation and how are we gonna pay for it?
What does that have to do with the motion?
The motion is, I don't even know. You want me to go back and ask you any information?
You asked for a question, I have a motion on the floor.
That was a discussion.
I have a motion on the floor. Is your...
It's regarding to approve and accept the AIC technology recommendation and proposal.
Jeffrey, he came to the villagers' network. He came here and expressed what he has to say. That's what this motion is.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what you said?
He came here and had a presentation.
AIC?
AIC came here.
Was I just talking about AIC?
No, you were talking about anything else.
No, I was talking about AIC.
You said riding too, you said the riding.
No, I did not say anything about the riding company. That was the last, I said, we don't know about these issues until we're at the tenth hour, we're in a, we're in a catastrophe. Why aren't we informed of things sooner? And why do I have emails from the ex?
This is still about the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, well, I'm not prepared to...
Well, then that's okay.
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
That's your question, we already know where it's going. We know where it's going.
This is not good business.
No, it's not, because you all don't want to vote to get anything done.
You don't want to tell your trustees about anything until it's an emergency.
You already know about this. You were sitting here through the whole presentation. You sat here through the presentation. If you don't want to vote on it, then we already know that. Trustee Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if Mr. Dante James can tell us about why we need the IT for the water pumps?
Sure, trustee.
Thank you.
Johnson. So the situation is like this.
We've got a motion on the floor. It's the reason.
Because maybe you know about AIC, why we need AIC, Mr. Mayor. We cannot have our inventory down.
Point of order.
We need to stop with all that.
Point of order, point of order, Mr. James is speaking, point of order.
Okay, so the technology that's in the pump houses, in each three of these pump houses, okay? It's about fifteen years outdated. So what's happening right now, almost like clockwork, right about now, the pumps and the wells will shut off because the internet keeps dropping. And listen, let me say this too, we discovered yesterday that the internet in those pump houses are probably, your house internet is faster than what we got going on over there, so we discovered that. Now, this stuff has been going on, trustee, maybe since you've been out here. I mean, I can't answer none of them questions, but like I started my conversation off earlier, listen, you have to give a damn about the town in order to make a difference, okay?
That's right.
So the people before me didn't give a damn. They knew, they knew. Now, it's not my fault they didn't tell any of you. I'm here to tell you what we dealing with, that's all it is, you know what I mean? And I'm not using any scare tactics, definitely no political tactics. I'm just being straight up with you and telling you. An emergency is actually what an emergency is. We can never foresee what an emergency is. You know what I mean? So when I come to you and I say to all of you, this is where we at with it, we need to move on. That's it, you know, we in bad shape, you know what I mean? We gonna make the news, what then? Everybody that has a home here gonna flood, it's gonna be all messed up, can't anybody afford that?
So, Mr. James, I still have the floor.
I'm sorry, thank you, trustee.
Thank you, Mr. James. So I asked him to state that, due to the fact, this is why we have this motion on the floor for AIC. We cannot afford to lose our IT. Come on, board, we cannot afford to lose them. Do the right thing.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor. I'm just saying to you, you said to make sure, no, I'm not talking. I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, to make sure that, I can make sure that I say, because I have my hand on it.
No, no, what I'm saying is, I'm asking her, she threw.
Right.
Then I will recognize you.
I know, I just want to make sure you see my hand. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Are you, are you...
Yes, thank you.
Trustee, uh, Burns.
Uh, so again, to trustee Williams and to Mr. James's point. The presentation is going to actually be a preventive measure. When he come before this board and present to us the problems, we can get a jump on the problems and we can prepare ourselves to do these pro- these, these, uh, budgets in stages. So, the, the, the bottom line is, we don't have a budget, as trustee Williams was saying. We don't know where the money's going to come from, as trustee Williams was saying. And as trust, uh, as, as Director James is saying, whoever was in control of all of this obviously did not do a great job of maintaining the system. So now only the system is, is kaput or is, is on the, on the brink of destruction, it sounds like to me. And everything needs to be fixed right now because it's all just, it's falling apart. And the trustees have to make sure it gets paid and we have no clue. So, Mr. James is recommending to come and bring us a presentation, to show us what's going on in our village. So all of us can have an idea and so we can get these, these jobs done.
We don't have time, uh, trustee Burns. Uh, from my experiences of dealing with this once or twice a month, uh, if you want something done, you just have to agree to get it done as soon as possible.
What I wanna know is, can we...
First of all, trustee, trustee, first of all, you have a motion on the floor, we don't have...
I, I don't know.
We have a...
But it's a discussion.
We have a motion on the floor, we're not going back and forth.
We have discussion.
We have a motion on the floor.
There's no second.
You, I, we are paid out, no, no, you're not, you're not gonna do this to me. You're not gonna do that to me.
Everybody's had an opportunity just to...
You're not gonna do that to me.
Everyone's had an opportunity to see.
If you don't recognize the board, I will not recognize...
I am trying to...
I'm asking for a recess.
I, I appeal that recess. I appeal the recess, can I get a second? I motion to appeal the recess. I motion to appeal the recess. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? I motion to appeal the recess. Thank you.
I'm not, and, and, I turned, I'm not, we have a recess. Can we take the roll, can we take the roll, turn, they know how we take it, we would take roll. This is hard, you're roll tip.
Yesterday, they sit up here and they... Right here, again.
They sit there, wait, they just sit there. They just sit there. Brett. You interrupted me, I was speaking, sir. I was speaking, you interrupted no one, but you interrupted me. And I'm not gonna allow that guy to eat up. I'm not gonna stand and just sit there. You have to be more, sir, like everyone else.
And the motion, all that he asked was a motion. They sat there and talked, and talked.
I'll ask for, I'm asking for, do you can vote, Madam Parkes, would you leave, Carter?
I'll vote, oh, yeah.
They already told you about table, I'm taking a vote. I'm talking, you know, see, that's what I'm talking about. You gonna tell somebody, we gonna take a vote, we gonna take, we gonna table? Okay, well, yeah, you, I see what you're doing.
You don't see anything.
Yes, I do.
No, that's why you're sitting in the back, because you don't see nothing.
What's wrong with you?
You see nothing.
Take your mask before you come, take your mask.
You don't see nothing, you don't do nothing. This is a disaster. You are the worst here in the history of this village. This village is a disaster and it's falling apart because of you there. Now, take the vote, take the vote, take the vote. This is a disaster, this is a disaster.
Do you want to resign? Madam Parkes, please call, please call, Madam Parkes.
He's asshole, I'm not asking, I'm not asking.
The question, okay, the vote, see, my motion was to approve and accept the AIC technology recommendation proposal to upgrade the villagers' network, which he presented here two weeks ago.
Exactly.
At the, uh, at, at a committee meeting. He came here, presented about, I think it took him about an hour and forty-five minutes. And it was bombarded with questions, especially from trustee that's talking right now. And all I'm asking to, because I saw and I see, and we just found out, the need to upgrade our equipment. So I'm asking for a, say, uh, vote to approve his resolution that he asked to have...
This is the same thing, she said it in my house, she said she had a vote.
And it was moved by trustee Johnson and second by trustee Carter. Madam Parkes, please call the roll.
No.
Yes. Trustee? You have to vote it?
We got, we got toilets outside.
Do the right thing.
You have some questions. Are you voting? We, we, we all passed the question, it is yes or no, sir.
I understand. I understand. I understand, but I want a question, I have a question. No more questions? So I'm not allowed to ask any?
Your whole life is a question, dear, your whole life, question. Well, that's something else. Was she so hot?
They got, they got a way to mess it, they cannot, they cannot allow this to go into place. We have questions, uh, questions we can answer. Then don't do it.
Um, it's not a question of being, not a question of being bullied or anything. Mr. James, is what you say is true?
It is.
Then it's an emergency?
Yes.
It's an emergency?
It's an emergency, I said that.
Wait a minute, ask.
I said that.
Come on, trustee.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Trustee Jackson?
Yes.
Trustee Sarah?
Yes.
All right. Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve tra- approve transfers payable and accounts payable. Distribution to the combined amount of six hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and sixty-six cents.
So moved.
Question?
Let me get the question I did not. It was moved by trustee, uh, Johnson, second by trustee Carter. Now, a big question.
Well, it's not a question, I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay.
To remove, uh, line item one zero zero, zero zero, five seven two six, zero zero zero. Invoices twenty-one sixty-seven through and including twenty-two, twenty-four. The dates of those invoices are April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four respectively, in the amount of seventeen thousand.
How much?
Sev- seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. Leaving a grand total of five hundred thirty-one thousand, twenty-five dollars and sixty-six cents.
Okay, because we're just gonna deal with the removal right now, then we'll come up with that. Okay, so, uh...
Mr. Mayor, are you entertaining other questions too, besides that removal?
You have another removal?
I'd like to know how you wanna handle this, sir.
What do you mean?
Okay, so, um, as we said earlier, everybody who works expects to get paid. Um, we have two attorneys that have not gotten paid, two attorney firms. One, the board approved that their attorneys get paid and they still haven't gotten paid, and they had a check bounced on them, and they have not gotten paid. The other attorney firm is handling, the other attorney firm is handling a very important case and they may have to withdraw because they're not getting paid. And I've made these statements before. And if they withdraw, it's going to cost the village a lot of money for another attorney to get started and they should be paid.
Okay.
I said discussion.
No, 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 I have, I, I need a second to his, uh, motion to, uh, what is it?
That's what I...
Seventy-seven thousand, have a...
Okay, I give a second, sir.
Okay, seventy-seven thousand, it was moved by trustee Coleman, I need a second on the, um, to amend the, uh, accounts payable, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by trustee Coleman and second by trustee, um, Williams, to remove seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars from the, um, accounts payable.
And Mr. Mayor, if you remember when I first started talking, I said, it depends on how you wanna handle this. Uh, what I was bringing to your attention was, we have a lot of people that are not getting paid, that are due money. But most importantly, we also have our village attorney on here that is owed two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents from invoices that are from sixty-one pa- days past due to over a hundred and fifty-one past due.
On the old...
Yes, they're on here now, they're on here now. But what I'm saying to you, Mr. Mayor, please give me an opportunity to tell you what I wanna say. When I came in to look at the invoices yesterday, I finally got an appointment to look at the invoices. And what I noticed was, the village attorney is charged two hundred and thirty dollars per hour. We have an ordinance, ordinance number nineteen oh one three that specifically states that legal fees should be capped at two hundred dollars per hour. I don't know how long they've been charging the higher rate, but that was, this ordinance has never been amended and brought back before the board. So if you wanna talk about, yes, people should get paid, but this two hundred and thirty-something or forty-something thousand dollars that we owe the village attorney is inflated. And I don't know if we should take it off and have them amend their bills? Or should we pay the bills when we know that they're inflated and hope that we get our money back? The point is, who authorized an additional thirty dollars per hour? I say that we remove their bills as well and get revised bills on the next accounts payable. Because nobody authorized this extra thirty dollars per hour.
Okay, an answer to your question, if you, did you read the contract?
Which contract, sir?
The contract from Ansel and Goody.
The one when they first came out?
When they first came out.
When they first came out, we told them we had a cap at two hundred dollars. And they agreed to the two hundred dollars.
But then, then the contract states their increase and when they were stopped. And when the increase was stopped.
Mr. Mayor, where, where's the revised ordinance? Do we live by our ordinances or do we die by our ordinances?
I'm just saying what...
If you're gonna allow people to make up their own, their own rates...
That was probably the contract.
Did we vote on the contract?
Yes, you did vote on the contract. No, you did.
I remember specifically when Anseline Clink came to the table, they said, we told them that we have a cap. If they're our village attorney and they knew we had a cap and they knew they were gonna increase our rates, maybe they should have brought an amendment ordinance to the table about raising the rates.
That's something to discuss right now, we have a motion on the floor. We have a motion on the floor to, um, take away the seventy-seven thousand.
Then I'd like to also add, Mr. Mayor, to take away the two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Is the Anseline Clink invoice?
No, is it on the invoice, I need?
Is it on the payables?
Yes, it is.
Let me see, right here, we find that person. I hope it's on, it's on the H record and...
No, that's, that's not where we're going.
Hold on one second, let me, let me, let me just give you one second. On page three. On page...
It's on page two.
On page three, fifty thousand dollars for Anseline.
Okay, that, that's not...
On different pages, sir, on page two.
Okay, okay, if, if, all of the...
The total of the Anseline...
Is two hundred and thirty thousand on the...
Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
On the eight, not the H record.
No, sir. No, sir, I'm telling you, they're on the accounts payable as well. I think, look, okay. I was wondering if you were just going to say, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I, you want me to do the math, okay? Somebody's gotta do the math, okay? I'm looking at seventy-seven thousand here, I'm looking at six thousand dollars here, I'm looking at fifty thousand dollars here. I'm looking at, um, I say all Anseline Clink invoices are being removed. If you wanna take just a minute...
That's what you're asking for.
Just a minute, I will add them up, but I'm...
You're asking for all Anseline Clink, we put our...
And to come back next time with the amendment.
For all Anseline Clink.
Yes.
Okay, with the, with the tone. Trustee, I made up...
We can, we got the hearing.
Okay, we're gonna get him a mic.
Thank you. If there's two separate questions on the floor, um, unless, uh, trustee Coleman must accept whatever is friendly then... What is amendment?
It's gonna be as a friendly amendment.
Right.
You would need to articulate the motion, whatever it's going to be.
Because right now, the motion on the floor...
Add some bills, uh, remove some bills, whatever it is, you need to articulate what the further amendment include. Otherwise, I would suggest that you take the questions separately. Um, in terms of what, in terms of what the cap on attorney fees, I know that there are litigation guidelines in, in the, in the village about how much you can charge for litigation. I'm not familiar with this ordinance that, uh, that nineteen thirteen it's been, it's not in the villagers' online bill for what it's worth.
I got it off...
Unlike, unlike mo- many businesses of attorney's, uh, raise the rates, uh, if you're on your team. And this, and, and two, uh, two hundred and thirty is the lowest rate that we charge, uh, on our school.
So, again, that should come before the board.
That's what hap- well, that, that, that comes up, uh, every year.
So, oh, I should approve, or we should just...
That doesn't lock in our, our rates forever, like, like lots of...
Okay, so you're saying we should amend, do include?
I, I think it'll be either we take up trustee Coleman's motion...
That's what I thought too, and then take up the...
Take up whatever the separate...
Okay, that's what I thought, that makes sense.
All that are working on it.
That would make sense, okay. The motion on the floor is for a, um...
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I need to make sure I'm understanding what's...
I'm ready to bring that to you now.
Yeah, so trustee Williams just discussed a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar attorney fee. He's discussing a seventy-seven thousand dollar. But yet she's asking to also remove that from the accounts payable for further, uh, re- a discussion with the attorneys in order to either amend the...
That's why I'm reading this.
In order to either amend the ordinance or... So, that's, what do you suggest?
What I'm saying is, first of all, we have a motion on the floor to remove seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. I wanna take care of that first. You will go with the next one, that trustee Williams...
Okay, thank you.
That's what I was trying to say.
Thank you.
So the, um, it was moved by trustee, again, it was moved by trustee, um, Johnson, second by trustee Carter to remove seventy-seven, I'm sorry, trustee, wait, who was... No, I'm asking for, they asked for a motion to, um, to remove the second, the seventy-seven thousand, it was moved by trustee Coleman. And second by trustee Williams. Okay. Madam Parkes, please call the roll. No.
Yes.
No.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, okay, now the next item you're asking to remove what? That'll be good, I hope they keep it a total.
Hold on, sir, I was, when I first started talking, Mr. Mayor, what I was telling you was...
Okay, please, do you have a total?
I'm working that.
Thank you, then, talking...
What I, I, I have to explain.
Talking, you know, we've heard that.
Nevermind, nevermind.
Thank you, thank you, ten years ago, no talking with me, eight years ago. Wish y'all would like, it's almost, now it's ten o'clock. On a simple board meeting, we ain't even got to the rest of the stuff.
Removing a hundred twenty-six thousand, nine hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-six cents.
A hundred, a hundred, a hundred and...
One hundred twenty-six dollar thousand. Nine hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-six cents from the accounts payable, which will still leave over a hundred thousand dollars. cents from the accounts payable, which will still leave over a hundred thousand dollars on the H report at the inflated rate. So we need to, I'm asking for a, to remove a hundred twenty-six thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars. That's what I was trying, yeah, that's what I was trying.
So, it was the mo- it was the motion on the floor to remove one hundred twenty-six thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-six cents. It was a motion on the floor to remove it from accounts payable. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh. All right, removed by trustee, I'm waiting, seconded by trustee Burns. Any questions? Matter of course.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
No. Motion carried. All right. And, well, that's what we asked for too. I didn't stop after.
I mean, more than one person, you know, what I wanted to know, my figures.
Four hundred and what? And what? I'm asking...
One hundred and four thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars.
That's it?
It's in my...
Okay. All right. I asked for a motion to approve transfers of payrolls on accounts payable and distributions and authorized the finance department to remit payments in the amount of four hundred and four thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars even. So move. Moved by trustee Williams, seconded by trustee Coleman. Any questions? Matter of course.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
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 Motion is carried.
Take it off. One twenty-six, one twenty-six, nine fifteen.
No, it's not, two oh four, three twenty-eight. Two oh four. Yeah, that's the total amount that we took off of the account.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor Burgess, she asked me what was the total amount we took off of the attorneys. That was one hundred twenty-six thousand, nine hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-six cents. That was the...
I do have a question and I wanted for the record. On the attorneys, um, what is it that you're looking for so they can get paid instead of the other attorneys? I'm only looking for...
Thank you for asking that question.
I'm asking, I'm asking the board that, yes.
Yes, well, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I asked several weeks ago that we, uh, make, uh, attorney Edie whole. Uh, she's been putting out a lot of money on a lawsuit in, uh, paying, uh, for, uh, filing fees, outside witnesses and whatever, out of her own pocket. So it's the Edie law firm, sir, that I'm asking that she be made whole. Also, the Olson Law Firm is bound to have thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and nine cents and they need to have the check that was returned, um, they need to have that replaced.
Welcome in, Burns.
I don't know, I don't, we're all the finance department. It was returned by, by, our check to them was returned and they notified the village and it has yet to be paid.
Okay.
Okay, so, and these are the only bills that we know.
So you're saying, the reason, the reason why we're not paying Ansel and Lincoln is because we didn't pay Olson and we didn't pay...
I never said that, sir. I never said that. What I said was, we have an open ordinance, which I believe I passed over to the attorney. We have an open ordinance from two thousand nineteen that states a cap of two hundred dollars per hour. If we're going to change the attorney's rates, then we need to change the, uh, the ordinance. You are our village attorneys and if your rate went up and you know you're exceeding the current rate per ordinance, we need to, now that you're aware of it, we eat, we need to change that ordinance. But I'd like a copy of the contract that said that your rate was going up because no other attorneys are getting the higher rate.
And we also, did you get a copy of the rates when it comes to, um, litigation? Because there's a different rate to litigation.
Right, well, okay, no, I don't, I don't know that, sir, that there's a different rate. And, and our ordinance, it specifically states two hundred dollars. It doesn't, it doesn't delineate one from the other. If, we're having this discussion now, attorney Bolton is here, if we need to make some changes to this ordinance, let's just do it so it's clear.
So you basically are holding the payments up until one...
The next accounts payable.
I just need to know, I just need to know when they ask the question, where is the money? So you're saying until we can find out the, uh, rep, um, ordinance, update it or whatever you want to see and then also you want to see that the other attorney get paid, correct?
Yes, sir. And I did send an email to the effect to Ansel and Lincoln earlier today that I was questioning the rate. Okay.
All right, moving down to petition's agreements and action items. I'm not clear with this first, all three of these. One is the motion to override ordinance, adopting section two dash one eighty-two of the municipal code of Salt Village regarding hiring procedures for village employees. So you want to override the ordinance?
No, Mr. Mayor, the agenda should read motion to override the veto of that ordinance.
I'm telling you what's here.
I didn't write the...
Did, did you, did you see that? Is that on there? Is that on there?
Clearly, it's an error of the agenda. What it should read, Mr. Mayor, is an override to your veto of these ordinances.
Who, who wrote this?
Okay, so can we just move forward? It's an error, it's an error! You know, Mr. Mayor, what this is all about.
My interpretation is not what's on there.
Overriding your vetoes. Why do you make this so difficult?
Make much difficult?
Okay.
I'm right, I'm reading what I'm seeing.
Attorney, Mr. Attorney, how do we amend the way that it's listed on the agenda to read, to veto, to override the veto, the mayor's veto on all three of these? Can we just get through that?
Right, oh, wow. You gonna talk to him, I am. You gonna talk to, see, how you gonna talk to somebody? Talk to them, I can, could've, President just wrote in, or... Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Bolton.
Thank you, Mayor, so the, so the veto of, reconsideration of the ordinances that were vetoed needs to take place the next week or the day after you deliver your veto message. I, it's definitely not perfect, but the, this agenda does state the general subject matter of the ordinances to be reconsidered. Uh, it's not, certainly not perfect, but it, I think it's good enough to, uh, put the public on guard as to what, what you're talking about with, uh, for reconsideration.
Okay. So with the explanation of the lawyers that are not getting paid, the, um, override was the override of my veto, uh, when I overrode it, uh, two weeks ago. So there's a motion to override the veto in regards to the municipal code of the village, of Salt Village regarding the hiring procedures for village employees.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Williams, seconded by trustee Burns. Any questions? Matter of course.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
No.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion to override the veto of chapter two, article four of the municipal code of the village of Salt Village concerning salary of elected officials. As for motion.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Williams, seconded by trustee Burns. Any questions? I do have a question on this one. I hope that you're not trying to increase your salaries while you're in office.
Absolutely not.
I just, I, I'm sorry, man, I wouldn't talk, I wouldn't...
You can't do that, it's against the law.
Excuse me, I was not talking to you. I just made a statement, I, you're not running to me, I didn't make, it was a statement I made.
Well, who you made the statement to?
I was ma- period.
Period.
Thank you.
Period, can't talk. No, sir, that's not what this ordinance says.
No, no, see, that's what I'm talking about.
This ordinance is just...
See, you want to be smart about, all I said is I made a statement. I didn't ask you who can talk, I made a statement. And I didn't say nothing to you. It wasn't talking to you. I just made a statement.
Excuse, excuse.
I understand what doing was...
Excuse me, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, you did...
You, I, you didn't have a question. I made a question, you didn't have a question.
No, you, no, you asked a question.
No, I, I didn't, you didn't say nothing.
No, no, trustee Williams answered the question.
No, I didn't have to answer the question.
No, you asked the question and she answered it.
No, I did, I made a statement.
No, you said I had a question.
I made a statement. Yes, I did say statement. Oh, boy, you know, y'all need to, y'all need to talk, y'all get your meetings together.
They can stop there, some manners.
Okay, um... Matter of course, you complete the call, go.
Yes.
No. Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion to override the ordinance, amend the municipal code, I'm, I'm sorry, motion to override the veto, the mayor's veto in ordinance, I'm sorry, of the, amending the municipal code of the village of Salt Village concerning certiori bond of financial department employees.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Coleman, seconded by trustee Burns. Also have a, not a question, but a statement. Uh, and I said this before, I know we're gonna, you know, jumping down, whatever you want to do, but you guys got to know what a certiori bond is. Because obviously you don't know what a certiori bond is. It doesn't go for the department employees. So you need to do that, but this is what you put, um, put in there that you want them to have one? Okay. But what I'm just saying, that you, you don't know what a certiori bond is, certiori bond is not what you think it is. And the employees wouldn't need that, it would be your decision-making people, but that's the, that's the, that's the, uh, motion on the floor, so override this particular ordinance. I'm sorry, this particular veto. We move by... Matter of course, call or not? No.
Yes.
No.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Report to standing committees and, uh, miss, I'm sorry, standing committees and trustee comments. If the comments, I'm gonna say this tonight, if it gets to a point where we start pointing fingers, accusatory or anything else, trying to rile up the village, uh, the residents or whatever, rah, 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 we're not gonna be doing comments. I'm hoping that you're gonna, um, talk about your committee, committee meeting dates and things, because you've had your comments back and forth. Okay, uh, budget is signed, asked and ordered, uh, trustee, uh, Carter?
My next committee meeting will be next Tuesday at six. Here.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a question from the, uh, finance chair. Committee, uh, finance committee chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, I have to ask, uh, trustee Carter, you are the, uh, chairman of the finance committee? Okay, clear. Can I ask you, have you, do you know anything about our current audits?
Yes, I know.
Okay, can you tell me, uh, what's going on with that at this time?
Can discuss it this time. We still want to stop the other...
You can't, you can't discuss what our audits are, okay, can you discuss when, uh, when we, when we'll be receiving a budget from the finance department?
No.
You, you can't discuss that neither, okay? Uh, can you discuss, uh, what the process is for the recovery of what you guys are doing, what you're doing as the finance chair for recovering the ten thousand dollars and the seventy-eight thousand dollars? Can you, you can't discuss that neither?
No.
Uh, can you discuss, um...
So now you're gonna browse these like the one person?
No, no, this is a, a, a point of order, point of order, point of order, point of order. Uh, trustee, trustee, uh, Carter, can you, can you, can you, um, at least be able to provide, uh, your fellow trustees with invoices upon request for some of the vendors that we need invoiced so we can make sure that they are paid quickly and expeditiously? Can you, can you assist in that process of making sure that we get... I'm sorry, what was that, sir? Can you talk into the mic? I can't hear you. I'll be at the committee meetings every, every two, every, every, um...
His committee meeting.
His committee meeting.
I don't know when your committee meeting is.
He's at six o'clock next Tuesday.
Okay, that's, that is not a, a committee meeting question, I'm asking you right here on the daisies. Can you... You'll have no answers for anything as our finance chair? Oh, okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Now, the finance chair...
Ordinance review, trustee Coleman?
No comment. No, no reports, sir.
Okay, public services, trustee Johnson?
Our next committee meeting will be held anytime on July seventeen at seven P. M. That in light of course, Mayor.
Okay, housing and... Housing and government relations, trustee Dan Sapp?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Housing committee had an event scheduled for the twenty-seventh of July, which was now postponed until further notice. That concludes my...